Please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, we'll start off with citizen concerns, any concerns that are not on the agenda. All right, going on to the approval of the agenda, I will move the approval of the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Radick, second by Taylor, any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. Moving on to the consent agenda, items three through eight constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item three, approval of the minutes of the May 14th, 2019 meeting. Item four, approval of claims. Item five, from Board Administration, approval of resolution of tax suspension for FO. It's not UFO. Six, County Treasurer, A, approval to cancel the county tax sales on mobile homes that have been abandoned by the owner and Regency of Iowa Inc. has taken ownership. B, approval of resolution for abatement of taxes on mobile homes that have been abandoned by the owner and Regency of Iowa Inc. has taken ownership. Seven, A, approval of a resolution adopting and levying assessment in Little Sioux, Inter County Drainage District of Manona, Woodbury and Harrison Counties, Iowa. Seven, B, approval of resolution adopting and levying special assessment in the Candles, Inter County Drainage District of Manona and Woodbury Counties, Iowa. C, approval of resolution adopting and levying special assessment in the Sand Hill Lakeport Inter County Drainage District of Manona, Woodbury and Woodbury Counties, Iowa. Item eight, from Human Resources, approval of memory of personal transactions. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Radick, second by Taylor, any discussion on any of those items? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero and ends the consent agenda. Moving on to item nine, from the County Auditor's Office, approval of the county personal property disposition policy.
Mr. Chair, I could address this.
Okay.
What's before you is the work of three meetings of the Policy Review Committee, and I think it's a great product. We came together and thought about how to make the disposition of county property more transparent and at the same time protect Building Services Director as far as, you know, explaining the background and the logic behind why items are either auctions donated, disposed of, there's a salvage or trade-in value, or if it's transferred to a department. So basically what this is going to result in is there will be a form generated and on a monthly basis, the county board will receive a list of items that have been accrued and sent to the Building Services Director with his recommendation or the authorized representative's recommendation on what to do with those items. The board will then essentially receive that as we do the claims and approve it through that process so that there's, you know, a process in place. Additionally, these items will be listed on the county website so that if there's any one out there that, you know, may disagree with how an item was disposed of or just wants to know the process of why something was sold or salvaged or given away to another entity, that that will be stated there. And we did not current, we do not have a process in place for that now that protects the Building Services Director as far as making what up to this point were discretionary calls. So, thanks to the Policy Committee. And any questions, myself or Michelle can answer, otherwise I'll move its approval.
Second.
Motion by Ung, second by Taylor, any other discussion or things that anyone would like to add? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. Moving on to item 10, from Community and Economic Development, approval of construction permit application and authorize the chairman to sign the board's scoring and recommendation letter to the IDNR.
Good evening supervisors, David Glaser, Director of Community Economic Development. On April 23rd, the Iowa DNR noticed the county regarding the construction application for the confinement feeding operation submitted by Mr. and Mrs. Lance and Jana Hammond. The applicants wished to build a new 900-head deep pit beef cattle confinement barn at an existing beef cattle confinement facility located in the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 16 in the Morgan Township, parcel number 87421610003. The animal unit capacity for the new confinement is 900, the annual, excuse me, the animal unit capacity for the existing confinement is 750, bringing the total animal unit capacity to 1,650, which meets the Master Matrix evaluation requirement. Per the board's resolution, 12,796, the board must conduct an evaluation of every construction permit application for a proposed confinement feeding operation structure using the Master Matrix. In reviewing the application, our department staff published a public notice for having received the application. We met with the applicants, evaluated and scored the application using the Master Matrix, participated in a site visit with the Iowa DNR at the proposed site location, and developed a recommendation for the board. As of the submission of this agenda item, May 15th, 2019, no public comments regarding this application have been received by our office, and we have not received any comments for or against the application since. The staff recommendation is to approve the application and authorize the chairman to sign the board's scoring and recommendation letter to the Iowa DNR.
Do you know what the common address of this is?
2436 Stafford. Stafford Avenue.
Does the board actually approve this or do they receive it?
The board is going to approve the recommendation, and then we will send the notice to Iowa DNR for the board. Included in your backup materials is the actual letter. We provided the analysis using the Master Matrix.
Can you remind me on this, is the expansion eligible for the tax exemption?
In addition to the partial tax exemption that the county approved by ordinance, we also, the applicants also have the ability to apply through the Iowa DNR for pollution control exemption as well. And I have some of those materials that we'll give to these folks this evening as well.
I'd move to approve the application, the recommendation, authorize the chairman to sign the board's scoring, recommendation letter to the IDNR.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt, any further discussion on this? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So that's all one motion there, the approval and authorizing chairman to sign. Okay. You probably just want it signed then, huh?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so moving on, 11A, Board Administration, approval of bond council engagement agreement, proposed issuance not to exceed $787,559 general obligation capital loan notes.
Okay, we started this about two or three years ago, signing these letters of bond council engagement agreements because in the past we did not know exactly what our limits were on the bonds, what it'd take to create these agreements, filing with the income tax, IRS, things like that. So we've always had them, now we're having to put in writing what they're going to charge. And our maximum fee in this particular issue is $6,500, and then there's an additional few dollars for like copying, printing, whatever they have to do. It is included, in the past we had included this in our bond borrowing, but we are this year because we don't want surprises and we all make sure it is funded. When it comes due, we have the money to pay for it. So the actual bond itself will be about 781,000, they added on to make it a maximum of the 787,000. So this is again, good business practicing, getting it in writing what they're going to charge us, not sitting here not knowing what they're going to charge us. So we're asking to have the board approve that to be signed.
I'll move that.
Second.
Motion by Radick, second by Ung. Any further questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. And item B, approval of resolution fixing date of June 4th at 4:40 PM, I'm guessing of 2019, for a meeting on the proposition to authorize a loan agreement and the issuance of note to evidence the obligations of the county thereunder.
This loan incorporates all the CIP projects we're doing this fiscal year. I do have a list I can send to you by next week. We have the list, it's just I don't know why it wasn't put here, but covering all of our buildings, county buildings that we've done projects this year. Also covers our PC replacements for this year, which will be done by December 31st of 2019. This, when we borrow the money, we got two years to spend the money, but most of this money has been spent or going to be spent. Covers our laptop replacements and our share with the city, county, 150,000, our share, 150,000 their share. So it covers those four, laptops, the PCs, the replacements, and our share with the city, and then our CIP projects, which was low this year. But next year, you know, we never know where we're going to be at with our CIP, it's depends what happens. That's why we waited the last, pretty much the last minute because I told the bond council and our bank, whoever does our banking, and we have to have this done by June 30th so we have the money in the bank. And we're on a tight timetable, but they assured me they could make it. So this is our annual loan.
All right, well I'll move that.
Second.
Motion by Radick, second by DeWitt, any further questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. Thank you Dennis, we will recess the Board of Supervisors meeting, convene the Wolf Creek Drainage District Trustees Meeting. Item 12, consider quotation for removal of trees from Wolf Creek, Wolf Creek Drainage District. Can't just light them all on fire?
Ah, I wish. They're a little wet for that.
Yeah.
As I reported two weeks ago, we did have some trees that were creating a block in the Wolf Creek Drainage District. It's about 700 feet north of 320th Street. We were able to get three quotes from contractors interested in bidding the work. Heck Drainage quoted $1,500 for mobilization, $190 per hour for the machine, job maximum not to exceed $6,500. Johnston Excavating bid 165 an hour for the long reach excavator, work not to exceed $3,000. The final bid was from Doug Wiggs, Sloan Welding and Construction Company, cost not to exceed $180. He listed his long reach excavator at $175 per hour, so.
Wait, what was the math?
$1,800 per hour. Or I'm sorry, $1,800.
He said 180. He said 180, I was going to say, let's quick hire him. He's going to have that project done in an hour.
He is still the cheap one at $1,800. He sent us, we haven't worked with Doug before he did provide a certificate of insurance for his work. Basically all they're doing is they're hauling it out of the creek, setting it up on the bank, will do that debris cleanup and restoration of the levees that were damaged as part of a larger project that will take in the whole of Wolf Creek in those areas that were damaged during the flooding event in March.
All right, well, is that the recommendation to approve it, or?
My recommendation is to approve the quote from Doug Wiggs, Sloan Welding and Construction Company.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Radick, second by DeWitt, any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. This must be a guy with an excavator who likes to have fun moving stuff, huh?
Well, he's also one of the taxpayers in the district.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
He's saving himself and his neighbors money.
That's a nice guy. Adjourn Wolf Creek Drainage District Trustees Meeting, continue Board of Supervisors meeting. Item 13, Secondary Roads, A, receive quotes for one new track mounted excavator for the secondary road department.
Not a big enough lip on the podium to hang onto these. I'll bet this won't be $1,800. Just guessing. Our first quote is from Road Machinery and Supplies Company. We are trading the current county unit as part of this transaction.
As supervisors, do we get to borrow the old one before they get traded in?
Do you get to what?
Borrow the old one?
That would be up to the board, I suppose, but. The total price bid for a 2019 Komatsu PC 210 LC excavator, $226,874. 226-874. Trade in on our current unit, $30,000. Net price, $196,874. Told you. Our next quote is from Mid Country Machinery. This is for a Cabalco SK 210. Total price, $201,000. Less trade for the current unit, $30,000. Net price, $171,000. Next one is from Transource Equipment. This is for a Volvo EC 220. Total price, $197,350. Less trade in for the current unit, $35,000. Net purchase price, $162,350. Next one is from Titan Machinery. Total price, $246,599. 246-599. Less trade in, $30,000. Net price, $216,599. This is for a Case CX 210D. Next is from Zeigler Caterpillar. Total price, $255,883. Less trade on the current unit, $26,000. Net price, $229,883. That's for a Caterpillar 320 excavator. Next is Murphy Tractor. This is for a John Deere 210 GLC. Total price, $237,300. Less trade in on the current unit, $30,000. Net purchase price, $207,300. $207,300. The final quote is from Reuters. Total price, $219,900. 219,900. Trade in on the current unit, $40,000. Net price, $179,900. That is for a Hyundai HX 220. I would request that the board receive the quotes and allow the secondary road department an opportunity to review the proposed machines.
I move to receive.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Taylor. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. Moving on to 13B, receive quotes for new motor graders for the secondary road department.
This year we're, we'll be purchasing two new motor graders, one for the Odo District, the other for the Hornick District. First bid is for Murphy Tractor. For the Hornick District, net bid, $314,800. 314-800. Trade in on the current unit, $65,000. Net bid with trade, $249,800. For the Odo District, net bid, $314,800. Trade in, $57,000. Net bid with trade in, $257,800. And we requested a bid on a push blade, $5875 each. The trade in machine from District Five is a Caterpillar 140 each. The trade in machine from Odo is a John Deere 770D. Next bid is from Zeigler Cat. Zeigler has offered us three options. The first is a 12 M3 all wheel drive. For the Hornick District, net bid without trade, $334,218. 334-218. Trade in on the District Five unit, $73,000. Net bid with trade in, $261,218. For the Odo District, $334,218. Trade in, $56,000. Net bid, $278,218. The push blade, $7,681.2. The second quote is for a 140 M3 all wheel drive. For Hornick first, $356,697. Trade in, $73,000. Net bid with trade, $283,697. For the Odo District, net bid, $356,697. Trade in, $56,000. Net bid, $300,697. The final bid is for a 140 all wheel drive. Net bid, $317,599. Trade in, $73,000. Net bid with trade in, $244,599. For the Odo District, net bid, $317,599. Trade in, $56,000. Net bid with trade in, $261,599. Both of those also included push blade bids. I'm trying to get push blades in each of our out sheds. Those come in handy especially with flood damaged roads where you have washed out culvert or bridge abutment. That sits out on our lift unit on the front end of the motor graders. The guys can have a load of rock dumped in from them, and they can push it in without getting their machine at risk working over top of that hole. We're still a couple short of having at least one in every shed, so each year we've been buying a couple to get, get one of those in. I recommend that we receive, the board receive the quotes and allow the secondary road department to review the alternatives.
Move to receive.
Second, motion by DeWitt, second by Radick, any other discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on.
That was mailed out by our office, so. Oh. Anyway. Just for the board's information, we placed it on the home page of the county website under Vegas News, that reclassification. Good. We'll point people that way. We'll point people that way.
So then we got electronic file from the engineer representative. So we can either email it.
Yeah, either of those options is available. We didn't mail a copy of the TIF plan with every letter we sent out, so.
All right, moving on to item fourteen for Marty here, the discussion on gravel roads.
Well, I'm sure everybody here's aware, we've heard a lot about gravel roads. And I got talking with Dennis and with Mark, and thankfully, I didn't have to reinvent it. There's been work done on this some months ago, and it's a pretty place, good place to start from. What I got looking at was if we keep just piecemealing fixed-up gravel, with the cost of gravel going up every year, and you accumulate the increases, I asked Dennis, I said, if we just borrowed the money upfront, got the gravel, and used the money we planned on somewhere down the line, paying for the gravel each year, could we not save the county money in the long run? And it's my belief that we could. Plus, we would fix a problem that's been hounding all of us ever since we've all been on the board and long before that. A problem that isn't going to go away, and by piecemealing it a little bit every year, it's never going to get caught up. And it's my feeling that if we issue a GEO bond and start using some of our TIF money, the secondary roads money that he has allocated for gravel, and a small increase in the property taxes, that we can fix the problem and hopefully get it up to where keeping it par will be a whole lot easier, and in my mind, in the long run, less expensive. And all I really want to do is get some discussions started on this to see where we feel about, do we want to fix it or just keep talking about it?
One of the things we've talked about at prior board meetings has been what it would take to get the roads to where they were a little over thirty years ago when we started to see the decline. Our, our big concern out there in dealing with roads that start to show mud with one inch rain in the middle of the summer is that we haven't got a lot of base out there. We get, we used to have anywhere from five to eight inches of base on our county roads. Now we're lucky if we've got two to three. If we have one truckload go through and cut a three-inch-deep red on the road to repair that road, we're actually mixing soil underneath the gravel into the gravel, which makes, makes our gravel look even thinner than it is, in to make that repair and restore and rebuild the crown. We had quite a bit of discussion about this eight, nine months ago. We looked at about needing roughly twelve and a half million dollars' worth of gravel, just gravel sitting in our pits, ready to haul to the roads. We looked at about another twelve million to get that material out there and put it where it needs to be. In working with Marty and Dennis on this, we've looked at a slightly smaller amount of gravel and being selective with the roads we're working on. You know, we have some roads that aren't going to need a lot of work. We have some roads that really, we have a Level B ordinance in place, and some of the roads where we don't have residents and that are really a land-access road, some of those we could allow to go into that Level B system and maintain them at a lower rate and put our investment in the areas where the traffic and the people are living. That would allow us to make significant improvements to our roads by, by not doing them all. And, you know, should the board want us to pursue this, we've already identified those roads that our department feels should go into the Level B system. That's part of a proposal we bring forward here later this year as part of this discussion. As far as getting the material out on the roads and getting the roads prepped and ready for having that gravel up on top of them, we look at this about, being about a five-year project. Two million tons, we looked at about eight hundred miles of roads. That's putting a hundred and sixty miles of our gravels into that Level B system, with the remaining eight hundred to be upgraded and improved. There's, we had discussed using contract hauling on the delivery of that rock to the gravel road system. We have a couple of other options we'd like to explore, and that I'm trying to get numbers on, which would be either to lease trucks and trailers and then haul that with our own staff, either full-time or part-time staff that would be brought on for this purpose, or purchasing trucks outright and then maintaining one semi and one belly-dump trailer in each of the four districts. Currently, we have one semi and one belly-dump trailer. We go from one to five to accomplish this project. And then looking at the contract option is another possibility. You know, we've only started to really flesh out those details as working with Marty and working last fall with Supervisor Taylor. We've really only started to flesh out some of those details now that we're, we're actually looking at the possibility of being able to finance this, or trying to flush that out even further, give the board some options.
And to go a little bit, one of the other things that I forgot to mention, one of the things that would require us to do is amend our Grow Woodbear County TIF district. And we talked about doing all of the roads in Woodbear County, which seems radical, but we wouldn't be the first one to have done it. But we were even talking about instead of doing that, just do the ones that we're going to do the most work on and that would possibly be the best use for transportation in the future. And I, we can do that, in my mind, they have to stay contiguous. I know there's other sides that say, no, it could, but I don't want to get into that. TIF is something that, when I dealt with it on the city council, I wondered half the time why I got put where it did anyway, but, and that's why, my thought would be that we would expand the Grow Woodbear County TIF district to include the roads that we're talking about working on.
Well, it's true. Good. Well, I, I think we should prioritize the roads most traveled, certainly, instead of aiming for perfection that isn't seen in really anywhere else, but I'm just not sure that this is what the designers of TIF had in mind for that part of the funding idea. I just, it's, it's really open-ended here, and if we want to prioritize certain roads and get, save on construction costs, I get that, but it may be more prioritizing in my mind than, than trying to solve it today, basically.
I, I think what TIF allows, and Dennis can correct me if I get off-target on this, is that it'll, it allows us to go back to utilizing those funds that are developed through growth, really targeting and using that money that CF Industries, AGP, Geleda, all those industries that are growing in that south part of the county, as their valuation comes online, we're capturing that and then using that to pay off this gravel at a rate that's higher than what we can get just strictly through the secondary road levy, even if we were able to levy that to the max. With the changes we've seen this year in the state code, I don't think it's been signed by the governor yet, but should that bill be signed by the governor, in twenty years, I'm not sure we'll, we'd be able to build to that maximum levy to take advantage of that growth in rural valuation and general valuation that's going to be brought on as that asset comes online to the county. This is really a project that I think benefits in, in doing it by size. I spoke at NACE with a company that's out of northeast Kansas who also comes in, crushes and processes gravel. For enough quantity, they would come to Western Iowa and set up their plant crush for us. Instead of looking at the current prices we're paying, which are over six dollars per ton to bring that material up, process and stockpile it, you know, we could be looking at, at saving. If we even save a dollar a ton on two million tons, that's two million dollars in material that we're saving by being able to go in larger quantities than we have now. It asks a lot for a producer to come in and crush the typically fifty to eighty thousand tons in each of our properties that we're looking for on an annual basis. Again, if they can come in, set up, and be productive, you know, hopefully, that would improve the prices we get from our current suppliers, and it might attract others to take a look at coming in and doing our work for us. There are other counties that produce multiple years of material and stockpile it. Palo Alto is one that's had very good prices in the past, doing it just that way.
Just don't want to lose, I think, I, I do think it's a point well-taken that the TIF is generally was designed to be able to spur further economic development and then have that base grow all the more. I like the idea in a sense of, you know, you get the value in purchase, but you're also going to spend over two-point-two million dollars in interest over ten years. And I know that the argument will be, well, you have rising gravel costs. Well, you're purchasing, if I'm understanding this correctly, purchasing ten million dollars worth of gravel that's sitting there, and you pay three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars that first year in interest, and then you're paying three-hundred-and-fifty thousand, you can't get that size out on the road in a year's time, correct?
That's correct.
This would be over five years' time, so I guess one of the things I'm wrapping my mind around, in addition to the use of TIF, which I, I think it's a very creative use, but, you know, the amount of interest that you're paying in relationship to being able to get that aggregate out there over five, so I'm just trying to kind of struggle with pain as we go versus, you know, I know we can swipe at it.
And if I may.
Between two thousand and two and two thousand and seventeen, just to give you an idea of what our average cost of production has gone up, we've had some years where it's gone up in double digits, some years it's gone down a little bit when we've had a little less, a little reduction in trucking costs. But our average from two thousand and two to two thousand and seventeen has been a five-point-four percent growth in the cost of gravel per year. So if we actually can get our interest rate under that level, we would come out ahead over what the cost would be in those years.
Assuming it continues to grow at the same rate.
Assuming that, that the costs continue to inflate at our current way of doing business, and they continue at that same rate in the future for, for comparison.
And one of the things we looked at was exactly that, is okay, and we've got three-and-a-half percent interest projection here on the loan. Today, when we were talking to one of the bankers, he said it would probably be lower than that. The number I was using for gravel is, let's just say it goes up two and a half or three percent every year, which I think is on the low end probably, but by get the cumulative effect, you know, if it goes up three percent this year, and then two percent on top of that, well, that's more than just two percent because you've got the bigger base each year that it adds on. And over a ten-year period, I'm just looking at, even at two and a half or three percent, I think we would pay more in increased cost than paying on this note at three or three-and-a-half percent interest for ten years. That's where I thought the savings, long-term, I mean, it's, it's a difference, it's, you know, sort of like, do you want to save money to buy a car or borrow and pay the interest? And that's just what I was looking at.
I don't disagree in that, in that push and pull, but we also have those significant infrastructure problems within our buildings, right? Where if we did it today, it would be a lot more cost-effective than doing it ten years down the road, and you could call that courthouse with the LEC. You know, it's how much can you do at once, how much can you borrow? You know, we have a thirty-year, a problem that was created over the last thirty years, and how fast do we try to solve it is, I think we took one swipe at it with the six-point-seven... And that was just a plan, so that's no obligation, but I worry about obligating, I mean, once we borrow this, ten million dollars, there's that eleven-cent levy that's going to increase, plus we are obligated to pay it back using money that would otherwise go to the county sergeant plus schools with and held from all those taxing bodies for this. Those are just some concerns, but I...
And, and one of my concerns with, and I didn't mean to interrupt you, one of my concerns with that is, like you say, the Sergeant Plus School District, their school buses are driving on these roads. And if the roads, you know, we heard the guy last week talking about he couldn't get his car out, he had to use four-wheel drive, well, if he needed to get an ambulance or a fire truck or something in there, are they going to make it? Worse yet, a school bus going down those roads hauling the most precious commodity we have, and the roads are getting, they're not getting any better. And the problem is, for the last thirty years, all we've been doing is putting a Band-Aid on it and going to solve every issue over the last thirty years? No. But I think this is one that if we take an aggressive approach, we can at least bring it up to par.
Mr. Chairman? What was the plan? If we, if we don't do this, what's the plan on when we could start finally taking action? Was it, would be July of next year? Does that sound familiar? Of any quantity or any, any?
Well, the growth, the growth in our regular revenues are keeping up with inflation. We're buying the same amount of material every year.
Okay.
We're probably looking at minimum levy out, if I remember right with the way that begins to compound, we're probably five to six years out from being able to maybe increase our purchases by about ten percent or so per year.
Well...
Theoretically, by the time we hit year twenty-thirty-six, which is when CF's on full, if we put all of that money each year to gravel, we would be doubling our purchase.
Well, I guess where I'm coming from is as much as I dislike interest, I dislike inflation on the materials that we need even, even more. And granted, was this one of the toughest winters slash thaws we've ever seen? Yeah, especially with that rain and flooding event that, that just literally tore some of our roads apart, but I'm also one to think sometimes you have to spend money to save money. And frankly, I don't, I think our rural residents on these gravel roads, whether they're business or residents or whatever, deserve some action now. I don't honestly think some of these roads can take another winter like we've had. And sorry to say, I don't like borrowing money either, but we got to do something. It's got to be, and I'm a little vague on, on the benefits of the TIF with the growth and so forth, but if that's a creative way to do it, I'm not opposed to it, but at the same time, I'm sitting here with calls almost daily on, we got to get something going, and I can't agree more. These roads, I, I'm just not in favor of waiting another year to five years to have any measurable, quantifiable quality of secondary roads out there because this is, it didn't happen overnight, and it's not going to get fixed in the next one or two years, but I think there's some, some terrible spots out there that have to be prioritized and work on those.
Can I just ask? You know, we took action as a board, and it was, granted, it was a, I don't know if we call it a plan or over the next ten years, so I don't want to be in this, it's an all-or-nothing, it's an either-or, either we borrow ten million dollars to purchase and it sits out there with a tax increase of eleven cents, or we do nothing. We put six-point-seven, a plan to put six-point-seven million dollars over the next ten years using the minimum, that's twenty-five percent of the entire cost of this, correct? What you were looking at originally?
It, it's twenty-five percent of the cost of it, but it's also not allowing for any increase in what our current costs are projected in the future. You know, some of our buying power gets eaten out. When, when I look back at what our average cost for stockpiles was in two thousand and two, it was four dollars and sixty-one cents a ton. If you look at a similar ten-year period and get out to twenty-twelve, it was, I want to say it was almost eight dollars per ton, so we were approaching doubles. So, you know, even though we're dedicating that to it, it, it's going to maintain our maintenance program in a way that most counties are going to see a decline, you know, at least we're going to be able to tread water and, and keep buying a hundred to a hundred-and-forty thousand tons per year. But again, that's not hitting our...
See, I thought when I talked about this, it was a sign, what you had said, I thought, Mark, is it's a significant down payment to eventually after four or five years. I mean, it's hard for me to, I mean, six-point-seven million dollars plus the two and a quarter million that we're not spending in interest, but ten million dollars on a twenty-five-million-dollar project isn't, doesn't really do anything. I mean, it's just...
It, it depends on how we, looking at how that cash revenue fell in, you know, each year, we gain a little bit more. I think next year, we should gain about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So instead of purchasing roughly one-point-three million, we'll purchase one-point-four-six million. Over time, I just don't think you're, you're getting as much... Over time, I just don't think you're, you're getting as much impact on it. I guess one thing I would, I would ask, and as I was sitting here, I thought of it a bit, would it be more palatable to do a fifth of the project each year, instead of going for 10 million, do two, five years in a row? Then you're not accumulating that interest at the same rate.
I mean, I'm just a simple guy, but I'm thinking $10 million worth of gravel that sits there to pay interest on the first year, and you can't get it out.
But if, if, we're talking about doing this project in five years, that's taking care of roughly 160 miles of road, or 40 miles per district. My foreman feel they can get that done. That's why we're proposing this as a five-year project. The reason for purchasing it all at once is to take advantage of that scale, having somebody come in with a production plant and put that material up in one shot. You know, if we do it in five years, we're still going to be ahead of putting up that stockpile, or one-fourth of that stockpile in 20 years, you know, looking at the 6.7 being one-fourth of what we were talking about needing. Am I, you're following what I'm thinking with that?
Yeah.
You know, again, that would, in that first year, we borrowed 2 million, we put up the pile that would be enough to cover that 40 miles. The next year, we put up another $2 million worth, cover the next 40. Over time, 40 per district, so it would be 160 per year. Over that five years, that same $10 million is, is stretched out with five different production runs, putting the material up on top, and then expending it in that year. I, I guess I'm wondering, is that more palatable?
It's more, I mean, I, I think this is.
You're not paying interest on four years of material sitting there, but you are going to pay more to produce it.
And that's, that's what we were looking at.
We're looking at 5% more to produce that same tonnage, to do that next 160 miles of roads.
And that's where I thought, Jeremy, where we talked about, you know, allocating that 6.7. I, I thought we would be better served to use that to pay on this at a fixed 3% or 3.5% rate, rather than worry about what's the cost going to be each year as we go. And I thought we would come out ahead by doing it that way. And yeah, we have a couple of big piles of rock sitting around, but I still think it would be better than going through the increased price each year. And again, when he first said that, well, if you, if you do this much, there may be another company or two that's willing to come in and compete to do this for us, which again, should help us save some money.
And, and you know, Halit could give us a better price if they weren't, weren't picking up and moving as consistently either.
Yeah.
Can we get more, I guess, firm commitments from, from those vendors? Or, or do you have that already?
All I can give you is a future prediction based on current production. I, I can call those folks, I, I've spoken with the salesman at the Kansas company and said, how much quantity would you need to produce to make it worth your while to come our way? And he's getting back to me with that.
Okay. Because I, I think what we should prioritize first is the prioritization of what we're going to work on the first year, if we're going to break this up. And that's the most, that's the best way for the board to make this defensible is, you know, because what I've seen and heard from a lot of the same people that I'm sure have been contacting all of us is, is that the Band-Aid approach does less and less every year, because the base is not, it, it's already degraded. And you need a, more of an investment at the beginning to ensure that what you, the Band-Aids you put on actually stay on. And I don't see how we can do that unless we prioritize some of our, our vast amount of roads and bridges that, you know, whether that's traffic count, or, you know, that may be a hard decision the board has to make in addition to.
I think it's more than just traffic count, it's also where, where do people live? Where do they have their?
Right, so maybe it's, you know, school bus routes, or.
We have roads where nobody lives right now, but there's a hog confinement on it. And, you know, that is an economic impact if those folks don't have an all-weather road. And it's probably seeing more truck traffic than the road that just goes to a couple of houses that have been sold off of a farmstead, so.
Just real quick.
Those are questions we wanted to be able to.
Just real quick, since I received this handout from Dennis a few minutes before the meeting, that we're all referencing, can we receive this for the record? I'll, I'll move that.
Any discussion on that, sorry? Yeah, follows in favor?
Aye.
I want to go back to the concerns that Matthew and Jeremy brought up on TIF, on economic development. There are other counties that did TIF, the whole county. The reason they tipped that was a track business, economic development, called wind farms. They had to have decent roads to get to their wind farms. So what they did, they tipped the whole county, all the roads and right-of-way, so they could do the gravel, or these farms were actually paying for it because they're in the TIF district. CF does have a lot of business coming in there, trucks, things like that are going out, that they probably used some of these gravel roads. Also, they said, and this was right from our bonding attorney, Mark Corey, says it probably wouldn't be wise to tip all the roads, because obviously, some of the roads don't need the help. So why would you put them in? Because then it leaves more criticism possibly of the board saying, well, you put them in, why did you? They didn't need the help. That's getting back to what Matthew's saying, on prioritize, and then we had that as part of the plan. Which ones really need it? And then to thread, you may have to put some roads in there that don't need it, to thread it so you have a continuous, two of these roads that do need it. Now, as I understand, a lot of the roads are in the western side of the county. But it is economic development, because just like you said, a hog farmer, how do you get your stuff to market? How do you get your crops to market? That is economic development, and our bonding attorney said it's more defensible. Now, when you use TIF, it's subject to reverse referendum also. We haven't had a reverse referendum in the history of Woodbury County. And I doubt with this one, because you're using new money coming on from the TIF, and we're going to need, to generate 500,000, we need 25 million worth of taxable value. CF releases that next year, in one year. So then you're obligated for the next 10 years at 500,000, but then after that, you're picking up 23, 24 million a year for the next 25 years. So there's going to be a lot of TIF coming back out to the people, but this takes care of a problem, and it is economic development. So I just want to throw that in.
Go ahead.
So let me ask you this, the obligation of 11%, or 11-cent levy tax increase.
Right.
Is that county-wide, or is that world-based?
That is county-wide, because in your debt service, which is exempt from your tax limitations of 2% or 3% or higher. And that levy will go down each year as our tax base increases. Now, when I say tax base increases, that includes all the increment money from the city, the county, wherever, added to our regular tax base to figure out your debt levy. So each year, that'd probably be going down, because CF will keep putting on more and more value every year. Or we're only going to use 25 million of that taxable value for 10 years, where the rest of it will be released, or if you've got new projects coming up. But whether it's in the TIF or out of the TIF, it's going to affect your debt service levy, because you got to add it all together. So 11 cents, that's the high number, because we just had a big revaluation for 19 in the city here, that all counts toward our debt service county-wide. So that 11 cents could shrink to 10 or 9 cents. And then each year, it'll probably go down. Now, you can reallocate some of the revenue sources, the 300,000, maybe we can put 400, 500,000, that reduce your tax asking for that year, save from secondary roads, or from TIF. If you've got a great sum of money there, you could put it down more to reduce the overall tax rate on the debt service, which affects all county people. But there's a lot of different funding options, but the first thing, whatever you think, is prioritize your roads first. See what you got to do, or you, not got to, what you should do.
So secondary roads gets funding from tax, sales tax, but, or, you know, gas tax. What percentage of the county's property tax go to secondary roads?
Uh, we levy 1.350 million out of 28 million total. It's all levy on the rural basic township people, nothing on the cities.
Okay. Is, you know, like, two, three weeks ago, we had some people from Benton Avenue in here. And, you know, there's only 10 residents on the road. And I looked at the numbers, and they pay as a total, something like 25,000 with the property tax a year. And then, when you figure what percentage goes, goes to the county, maybe you're getting 15,000. And then of that, then 5% of 15,000 actually goes to secondary roads. And, yeah. So now you're seeing why maybe there's not a whole lot of gravel coming out there every year. There's just not the tax base to support a nice road.
Because that 7,500 supports more than gravel, all your wages, all your.
Right, right, exactly.
Equipment, diesel, everything.
Exactly, it's everything.
Yep.
And TIF is not the right revenue source for it, in my opinion. I mean, TIF is for new development, not maintenance. And I get that there's, yeah, roads are needed for economic development, but really, once the road is built, the maintenance falls upon the taxpayer. This should come from, if you're going to bond for a debt service, or you, you levy a little bit more. And I would, you know, if you're going to.
The only thing I'd like to point out, we did build a new road for CF to get people in and out of there.
Right.
New road.
A new road, yeah. That's the point, the new development.
The other point is, we built a road for platinum grain. Now that we paved and stuff, they're adding another grain bin out there for a couple million.
Right, right.
So roads do draw.
And I, and I never said that it's not, I just said that the point of TIF, though, is for new development, so you're supposed to build new roads, not maintain the existing.
Yeah, but roads do create new development, so true in fact.
Yeah.
But I think over, maybe getting into Dennis's point, going from two inches to four inches, county-wide, it, it's more of a maintenance thing, rather than, we did this, and all of a sudden, there was 500,000. Intentions are right, I just.
Correct.
I think the idea is, you grow, the reason you held the money from the taxing bodies was so that you could get more tax, right? You grow the tax base. So if you did do, Keith is maybe thinking, this would be a subject of.
A referendum, yeah, if you go 2 million a year, you borrow the money. I don't know, I think you throw the, I mean, we're going to have to ask for a referendum anyway on the jail.
Well, wait a minute, on that, you do not have to ask for a referendum, because.
2 million a year?
Last by state code is economic development, maintenance of roads. You don't have to go to referendum on roads.
Really? Oh, 2 million a year? Really, okay.
Yes. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I, I would have.
There's two section codes, one with TIF and one with debt service.
Does the lawyer want to weigh in?
Have you got this memorized?
I can give you the sections code too, I got them upstairs. I got that from our bonding attorney, but yes, you should read through them too.
We got to get something going. There's just no, no two ways about it. This is not, sitting here telling people to be patient is not working. I'm not, I'm not, we got to get this thing moving. It's got to get off the ground and get moving.
And my biggest fear, we had a bad spring this year, and I wasn't taking that as the reason for this. Because what I hear about the fact that if we get a one or two-inch rain during the dry summer, we have water coming up through some of our gravel roads. That means there's basically nothing there. And I think it, over 30 years of cutting back on it and neglecting it, I think it's time to do it. And I just, my personal thing is, if I could get the money upfront, get better pricing, and use what I was going to spend over the next 10 years as a payment on that loan, I'm better off than just piecemealing it for the next 10 years to hope to catch up. And that's just my personal philosophy where I come from.
I totally understand the points on that. Do we have about 160 miles of priority located already, or, I mean, why, I mean, obviously, you're getting calls, you have areas that are worse than others.
Well, everybody's priority road is on in front of their place.
Sure.
I don't think it would take very long for us to come up with a, with a priority list of roads. I mean, there's some that, that jump right out at me. You know, back, I could pick out some in every district, that we have a large cattle operation in the, the Correctionville area. We've got three hog confinements under construction right now. All of them are out on gravel roads, three to four miles away from the nearest pavement. It would take very long, working with the aerial map, working with the records we have in our office, to come up with 160 miles we'd like to do in that first year, and bring up to that five to seven-inch base. One of the other reasons we looked at this as a multi-year project is, it takes a little time to incorporate that gravel. You should really put some down one year, come back the next year, and put the second shot down. I mean, we're talking three, I think it was three to 4,000 tons per mile. It's hard to get that compacted and in place. You want to put that first step down, and then the second, just like we did when we were building those roads for CF. If, if you were to drive down there in the same period, we were getting complaints about our other railroad's going to pot, those roads held up in more like iron all spring. They were almost as hard as pavements. And I got laughed at when I said this at one of the CF public meetings, but I told those folks down there, when this is done, you'll have the best gravel roads in the county. And that has borne fruit as the project finished up. We put over 5,500 tons per mile in those six miles of road down there. And that investment was done to take all the truckloads that were going in there, but that material remains there to the benefit of those people. And that was an area where, in that Missouri River bottom, a lot of our roads don't have a bottom in a spring like this one. If you compare those roads around CF to the roads that are between Winnebago and the 290th Street overpass, those roads were very difficult to navigate in some places. Marty being the southern district might have gotten some calls from them this year. I know we did.
I've got several interesting rides. It's the first time I've ever been.
I know Supervisor Ongas had some interesting rides from a couple of our more colorful residents.
This was the first year I ever got stuck in a four-wheel-drive pickup going up a hill on a gravel road.
We had already mixed trucks.
On one of the ride-alongs, or yourself?
Oh, no, I was riding along with one of our citizens, who asked me to come for a ride with him.
Make sure they hit the.
Long walk back, too.
Oh, no, we backed up, put it in low lock, and that road's probably going to need some serious repair.
Makes the point, like, getting your supervisor stuck.
You know, preparing, in a couple of weeks, we could have a map together where we'd look at the first priorities. Now, I don't think you're going to see a shotgun pattern necessarily, where this is going to be fairly distributed, because I think we're going to see that our traffic needs and some of our needs are going to congregate on the west side of the Mobile Blacktop. That's kind of our, our split. That's not to say that there aren't needs in the other areas, but just looking at the map, you can see that our, our traffic counts tend to be higher in the western half of the county than they do in the eastern half. Again, we'll be looking at cattle and hog operations, large farm operations, residential clusters. Those are the things that are going to draw the, the priorities as we begin to look at this, so.
So will you address things like the lack of drainage control, and maybe?
That would be one of the goals of, of taking on this.
Like this one, no drainage ditches, and then it's got trees that keep it in the shade, so it stays wet all day?
Yeah, but, what road, is that a gravel road, or is that?
Yeah, that was that. Only had here for several weeks.
Well, that's been, yeah. We've already started to work with our, Mid-American is coming out to meet with me after Memorial Day to take a look at those utility poles that are causing the problem with roadside drainage. And, you know, you don't have to look very far when you get two-thirds of the way up that hill to see how much higher the ground on the west side is, and then the fact that there aren't ditches on most of that road, so.
This is a good discussion. The TIF revenues, Dennis, from FY '21, '25?
Yes.
What is the availability of TIF in those years?
Okay, availability, TIF.
And I'm not saying that's the proper use, but I'm just asking.
Give you an idea, this year, we. Give you an idea, this year, we released in the Grow Woodbury County, because CF is part of Grow Woodbury County, we released thirty-four million. Okay, now this next year, in eighteen, which is April nineteen-twenty, that was a thirty-four million. In fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, we're gonna release an additional approximately twenty-four million. In fiscal year twenty, which is, or calendar year twenty, which is twenty-one, twenty-two, we're gonna release almost thirty million.
Okay, so I guess my question is, if this is the proposal...
Yes.
How much of revenues are actually available to the county?
Revenues? Each year, the C keeps compounding bigger and bigger. So it's twenty-nine plus, say, for nineteen-twenty, the thirty-four, thirty-four million generates about twenty-one dollars per thousand. You're probably talking seven, eight hundred thousand taxes. Now you go to the next year, nineteen, you're gonna generate another twenty-three million, eight hundred times twenty-one, another four hundred and sixty thousand. So each year keeps adding up as we go along. So the seven hundred dollars is gonna be one point one million. The following years will be one point five or six million. It just keeps going up and up. I do have a chart, and I can give you that, too, next week.
Cut to the chase.
Okay.
I guess my question is, if you just asked me today, do you wanna obligate an eleven cent tax increase on every resident in the county in the next ten years? I don't know if I'm there, right?
Right.
If TIF is what you're talking about as a potential, why only take five hundred thousand?
Well, we could take more.
Well, that's what I'm...
Because you're gonna have a lot of money coming on in the next twenty years.
And that was one of the options we were discussing, is rather than the eleven cents, because, but we wanted to have more available to be released, too. And we don't wanna stop releasing from the TIF either. But yeah, first thing he said was, you know, that every year, the amount available to us is gonna go up in that side, which could eliminate the tax side or lower it substantially. Because we looked at that, because I told him, I said, I wanted a proposal that would have the very least additional tax dollars added. And...
I knew using TIF was gonna be somewhat of a discussion, but there is a possibility after two years, when you get to year, if you use five hundred thousand one year, you say, then the next year, you say a million. That offsets your debt service levy entirely, because this is new money the taxpayer has not seen. And now with the new tax laws, it can be used as a new revenue source. Before, it was your growth plus your new growth, you could add on, and then you could use reserves. Well, they've knocked the reserve side out. Okay, you can't let your rebuild. They've knocked the new growth out, so we can't add that on for our two and three percent. So they've thrown everything together, and that's our two percent. So if we levy thirty million this year, we're limited to six hundred thousand, which requires three to one vote. Or if we go three percent higher, it requires a four to one vote. So all this new valuation is gonna do, basically, yes, it'll give us new revenue if we wanna generate that revenue, but it's gonna lower the tax rates. Before, it's gonna give us new revenue for the new growth plus the normal growth.
And he talks faster than I do when he starts throwing numbers out. But when we talked about it, we said, hey, the first year, five hundred thousand in TIF. The next year, we could go seven hundred thousand and still have money to release.
Yes.
And...
But I didn't put that on there.
Now he said a million today, so...
Well, it depends how much you wanna release. We could increase that two hundred thousand year, and you still have two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand additional revenue to split for economic growth or tax relief, or all, taking all towards tax relief. It depends if we have any new projects. In four years, we will be rid of the two hundred thousand year we pay CF. For that eight hundred thousand, we told them we'd do. We're in our first year now, so we got three more years. That frees up two hundred thousand there in three years. Dogwood Trail will be paid off, of which, you know, we're levying all the money for that. That's a hundred and seventy-six thousand year plus interest. So we're gonna free up in three or four years, four hundred thousand that we're paying on right now.
Take your breath, Dennis. One of the things we discussed earlier was, if things worked out well and the growth continues from this, we could be paying this note off in five years instead of stretching it out over ten and saving the taxpayers that much money, and then that would free up the rest of it, too.
And getting the roads fixed at the same time.
And have the roads fixed, yeah. Of course, Mark is much more patient with his people. I was saying three years. But I'm not the one out there doing the work either, so...
So I think Jeremy and I are on the same page here as far as remembering the taxpayer's first resolution.
Fifty-fifty.
Right. And how we, you know, committed, or at least had a goal to devote fifty percent to infrastructure. We've already committed the increase in your department from, what was it, taxable valuation to this problem, but, I mean, I'm comfortable saying all of the half that we, you know, are committed to infrastructure be used for gravel. Because it's such a vital component of what county supervisors are entrusted with. And how would that help in addition to what we've already committed?
One more time, you wanna, you're talking three hundred thousand secondary roads, then what?
So if I'm following right...
Yeah, go ahead.
TIF comes out as this big thing that would have otherwise gone to these different funnels, Sergeant Love?
Yes, yes.
With the county.
Yes.
What if we just let it come to the county? The forty-three percent that we otherwise would be getting?
You see...
Yeah.
In other words, we are getting, we're using some of our own money, right?
Yeah.
What if we structured the, because I like the idea. I mean, it's not, well, let's not do anything. What if we borrowed for this and essentially mitigated the increasing costs of, you know, you get more aggregates, you're volume-based, right? And at the same time, the rising costs, all that. But you paid it off as we go, as we receive more TIF revenue, not TIF, as we receive non-TIF but CF revenue.
New lease revenue coming up.
Right. What does that do to, am I...
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, what happens, though, just to point out, that forty-three percent, after we get to forty-three percent, secondary roads only gets about eight percent of that. Because it has to be split up, your general fund, your general basic, your mental health, your debt service, and your rural basic. So after you get to forty-three percent, say it's forty-three thousand, he only gets about eight thousand.
But it's new, we can decide what to do with it.
No, you can't.
It's new.
Not on the portionment. It has to go to the various funds, the normal portionment.
Once it goes into the...
How about the rest of your mental health and social services?
And what do you, like, general basic, general sup?
Right. Is there any prohibition, once it's in those varying funds, from using something from general basic versus rural basic?
You can use general basic. Say fifty thousand goes in there, you could go ahead and say, we're gonna allocate fifty thousand to this project.
Right.
Yes, you can do that.
So everything but maybe social services?
You can use general sup, because that's dedicated to specific items. A general basic is pretty much wide open.
But we've talked in the past, a general sup...
You can only levy sixteen and seven eighths of a cent of the general as an income towards secondary roads.
As a tax.
As a tax, yes. Now, I don't know what other funding mechanism you would use in this case. You know, that's Dennis's end of it, but this is one of the reasons that, normally, I'm not one who likes to borrow for roads. A few of you who've been around longer have heard me say that when we've discussed it for a couple of things. But we're at a point where, with existing revenues and the restrictions on those revenues, we can't raise extra money if we want to now. And that's one of the reasons that in this case, bonding for it looked attractive.
Right.
It also gets us that input back, and then from that point forward, we can do a better job, hopefully, of maintaining the higher valuations we'll have in future years. But I'm not sure, quite sure how that forty-three percent you're talking about funds. But if it's coming in as a revenue in that year, we do have that limit on fund transfers that we have to deal with.
And what is that?
Sixteen and seven eighths of a cent applied against the general.
Which generates what, about three hundred and seventy thousand?
No, it's, if we're...
Countywide?
Countywide, it's just shy of eight hundred thousand this year. Next year, it was projected to about eight hundred and ten thousand.
And you're saying, Dennis, we can't appropriate additional levies from supplemental?
Oh, right. Supplementals specifically for dedicated mandate, like the courts, the elections, to an obligation, emergency services. They're specific, they're above and beyond our three fifty mandate.
But we've gone above that in general basics, so that doesn't change the sixteen, seven eighths?
No. Now, there's things you can do with the general supplemental, help the road department. You could pay our overhead, our insurance, our health insurance now comes out of the secondary road fund.
Let's do that.
Or could buy that out of the general supplemental.
Money is, you know, what's the word?
No, we can't do it out of general sup either. It has to be rural basic, because there's general sup and rural supplement.
Then it would be rural supplemental. And that wouldn't allow you to exceed that three dollars and three eighths of a cent, I believe. But again, you, you know, there's areas now where we're funding things out of secondary roads that would be eligible, you fund it out of rural or general supplemental.
I would like to, and we're not gonna figure this out right on our people's... I'd like to see, because I think this is really a great decision. If we, what would it look like if it wasn't TIF, but it was through the release that would be otherwise coming to the county? Could you run a model over five, ten years and say, here's what it would look like? And then figure out some of these things of, you know, where can one go up and one go down, you know, with the exact...
Same basic, use the forty-three percent. Even though we got a portion out, but still, we can move it around, so...
Borrow and pay off the debt as we go.
If we...
We have the best of both worlds.
If we know the number for the fifty percent of additional revenue, just to make sure that gets to his department, if it's for wages or gravel, it's additional money that...
The only thing we could run into is maybe your maximum levy or your minimum we're at, anyway. But I see what you're saying. I can give you next week another schedule, CF, if he comes on board. Though I've done, I broke into a fifty-fifty policy, and it shows you how much would go to, if we did fifty-fifty, how much go here, how much go tax relief. Then I break it down to each entity, the city or the school, the county, and all the other little entities there. And then I take the county share and break that down even further. So it'll give you a good idea of what we're talking about with the forty-three percent.
Last, last dumb question tonight, what if you did this over twenty years instead of two million?
You're gonna pay a lot more interest, and the interest rate will go up. And why I'm saying the interest rate will go up because you're long-term. The shorter the term, the cheaper the interest, the longer you go, because instability of interest rates, the banks won't go out twenty years, probably. And that'd be a pretty big interest rate. We're talking three percent unless we get bank qualified. We'd have to split up, if we did this, you'd have to split that ten million into two calendar years. Because we're borrowing seven ninety-one, so the most you could borrow this year is nine million. Then you have to borrow another million next year. Or you split up five and five. Or any way you wanna do it, we'll live at ten million a year on bank-qualified taxes, which gives the banks a chance to give us better rates.
And we just did the seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand earlier today.
So that'd come off our ten million for this current calendar...
Calendar year.
Goes on calendar, yep. So there's definitely advantage going if we borrow the money bank-qualified. Or if we get into other issues, it's bigger, ten million's a whole different story.
Well, I think this has been a great discussion, and what I'm gonna say is, this isn't where this is gonna stop. We're gonna come up with some type of a plan, hopefully one that we can all do, but to get it done...
Tomorrow, get started.
Tomorrow or the next day.
Well, realistically, not. But I'm just saying, I don't wanna wait another year, because our roads are not gonna survive that.
And I don't either. And I, again, I don't like to borrow money, but sometimes it's cheaper to borrow money than to fight inflation or just inflated costs as you go down the road. And if we can find another way to pay that back without that eleven cents, hey, I'm all for it. Because I told him when we started this, I said, I want that part of this to be as low as it possibly can be. When we first did it, we thought it was gonna be a penny, and then we forgot, oops, we don't have that three hundred thousand every year. We have it just yearly, and that makes a big difference.
You know, it's kinda sad, as we're having this very substantive discussion to kind of nobody.
Well, I...
I mean, it's not, what's that? You two, yes. There's millions of viewers.
Well, several of the people that have been calling us got a hold of me. And I told them truthfully, today was gonna be just a discussion, and there was gonna be no action taken. And I told them, I said, if you wanna come, put your input, that's fine. But I really thought this would be a better discussion for us to have.
And I don't mean the journal, of course, he's here.
You see how fast he's writing? He's getting called to nobody by the camera, see?
But I mean...
But I had several of them, said, I mean, they were gonna bring crowds. And I said, you know, this is the discussion that I would rather have us have without the emotions overflowing and all. And that was, there were only several that got a hold of me, but that's what I told them.
Well, I do think, once we get some of these, the two answers on how much the revenue would help and what the priorities on the first year would be, then we do need to go to the people and have some sort of a town hall and...
And the longer you wait, that hundred and sixty miles by next year may be a hundred and eighty, and next year may be two hundred and twenty. Who knows? It's just not gonna get, it's not gonna get better, it's gonna get worse.
Well, truthfully, I wanna come up with a plan this year, like, quickly.
We can't levy the money in this new year coming up.
Nope.
So if we do borrow money, we're gonna be paying some interest, but she would cover through his secondary road fund. But then it followed with twenty-twenty-one. So we got a year. Why don't I say we got a year?
No.
One of the things is, the dime gas tax raised roughly one point two million a year for the secondary road department. We've taken twenty-five percent of that and dedicated it to gravel road projects each year of the five-year program. It's bought, it's bought us at least eighty miles a year at three hundred tons per mile, which is about a tenth of what we would like to be able to be putting on the roads. But still, there was some improvement seen on those roads where we got that investment out there. But instead of, what we're talking about is taking that three hundred thousand and adding it to this pot that we're using here, because if we're, if we're going whole-scale into making road improvements, we throw that three hundred thousand in with the money that we're borrowing, and it becomes part of that lease cover interest on that money.
That brings a question up then. The three hundred thousand you're talking about, is that in addition to three hundred thousand, Jeremy, we're gonna take out a TIF anyway? Or from new revenue from TIF? So are we talking six hundred thousand from secondary roads?
I didn't think we were, but...
No.
No, I thought I heard three hundred thousand, the gas tax he's dedicating.
Yeah. He's already done that, no?
That was in Marty's proposal, with that three hundred thousand per year. It's just, we can't put three million out ahead, because we get that three hundred thousand each year that we're setting aside.
Well, the important point is, we've already taken steps, and we're going to take more steps.
Yep.
It's not as if this is something we've just decided to act on.
We've discussed the need, yeah. We've discussed the need, but we didn't have financing. Now we're looking at a possible financing. Now we're trying to maybe hone it in on a program that might be, well, it's already smaller, because we're talking about eight hundred miles. When we started talking about this at our foreman's meeting, you know, I let them know that we were having this discussion today. And we wanted to be sure that whatever we proposed, the guys on the ground can achieve it. And those guys went out of the room walking on the cloud almost, because they've been watching these roads. None of us like administering a system that's uniformly declining. It's hard on morale. They went out of there with a real boost, and they're working now to figure how to make all of that work and how to target our improvements on the roads that needed for drainage and these other things ahead of the money getting here.
That's before you told them my goal was three years, right?
Again, that is, three would be tough, doing it with the staff and equipment that we now have. You know, forty miles a year, they've really got three good months to look at doing this work. And that's gonna be really putting out. And, you know, it's one of the things that we're proposing in looking at leasing and utilizing our own trucks is looking, comparing that cost of contract versus lease purchase, and then bringing on county staff to do that work. We think, we think we can shave costs doing it that way.
Well, let's not forget that not only the five of us sitting on this board are taking phone calls and getting beat up. I know our secondary roads people are getting slapped around, too, and their hands are tied, so...
We're doing all we can to...
I know, I know you are. I know you are. And I've heard from a couple of them that, from a couple of your secondary roads people that I talk to occasionally, they're frustrated as well, because we're not giving them the resources.
Again, I would like to say, I think this has been a great discussion.
Thank you for bringing this, Marty.
And I think we're on a plan now, instead of just talking about it and then letting it sit. And we'll do a lot more refining with all of us talking to Dennis. it sit, and we'll do a lot more refining with all of us talking to Dennis and, and Mark, and we'll get something put together and hopefully solve a problem that's been long needed.
And in the meantime, I'm also meeting with FEMA, so that might slow me down a little bit of response, uh, they're coming in tomorrow finally, so.
Well, you know, Mark, for what it's worth, two previous comments about your staff, uh, I mean, when I get calls, it's typically, more than half the time, it's, I love our foreman or the guy that comes out, he just doesn't have the resources, it's not as if, you know, your staff is being attacked.
Yeah, and, and for the most part, I wouldn't say that, uh, that any of it is our staff being attacked.
Yeah.
It's, the folks are, are frustrated out there, it's, it's, it's a bad season, none of us are happy with it, so.
This year was worse than normal, but the problem is there. It wasn't, the problem wasn't this year only.
No. The, the problem's been building, and this year was particularly acute.
So again, thank you, gentlemen, for the discussion, I thought was really worthwhile.
Our department, I know, foreman included, we all definitely appreciate the fact that you're taking a serious look at this because it's, it's something that as a group, everybody's felt's been needed to be reviewed.
Can I ask you for one point of clarification there, Mark? On that gas tax, you said three-hundred thousand's already been allocated, is that the three staff people that were hired, or you're adding?
That three-hundred thousand dollars per year is being used to purchase gravel to haul directly to the roads.
But we also added the three employees that are also covered through that gas-
And that comes out of a separate part of our budget, that comes out of the maintenance side of our budget.
Right, but we added those as well, and those three staff are dedicated to maintaining gravel roads too.
They were all road grader operators that were added, yes. That took us from four in three of our districts back up to five motor grader operators in each district, so that puts a body in every motor grader except our spare.
That was, that was the only clarification I wanted there. All right, so are we good to, to move on?
Yeah, thank you very much for the discussion.
Thanks for your work, guys.
And, and Brett, we don't really think you're nobody, okay?
I am nothing if not taken out of context. Thank you for that, Mr. Chair.
Moving on to committee meetings, Jeremy?
Uh, just quickly, we have a rural health meeting tomorrow, I'll come back with more discussion on the Woodbury County transition, and then one quick point that I think is , uh, neat on our courthouse, Steve Jorgensen, who was once a, a lead for the Baker Group, is now working for NG, which is a multi-million dollar European, and reached out back to Bogan Reef because they're helping out Notre Dame's rebuilding and looking for someone who can make leaded glass, and gave them the example of the Woodbury County courthouse and their work there, so somebody from Iowa may be hoping to rebuild somewhere over there. So I thought that was-
Awesome.
All right. So I obviously had the policy review committee meeting, Chairman Raddick couldn't make it, unfortunately. Um, we'll have the next meeting at Home Furniture, so that-
We, we should, we should.
Um, in addition to the, uh, policy we approved today, we discussed the email retention, basically the question of how long do you maintain documents? Uh, we discussed freedom of information, which is basically how, how do you, uh, charge or not charge for additional staff time and very large requests? How do you treat that, is there a process? Um, and then we also discussed the personal vehicles when used for company use. It's already addressed, it needs to be addressed a little bit more in our handbook. Um, the policy is old, needs to be revisited and discussed some, and put in some more details about liability. So on a few of those items, I was mentioning that we needed to get feedback from department heads. I spoke with Chairman Raddick about possibly starting up some sort of department head meeting again, uh, so that there is that venue, because even if there's not something to discuss, you don't think there is, it's always good for the left hand to know what the right hand's doing and to have the department heads in the same room, I do think they appreciate that, to have that periodically, it doesn't have to be every month like I did, it doesn't have to be every month like Jeremy did it, you don't have to gather at the nature center for visioning meetings, you don't have to go all out, but more than one or none is a good idea to, to have this, uh, sort of platform, because these, these questions do come up, and we don't have, obviously, all of our department heads at all of our board meetings, so that's it.
Done here.
None for me. Citizen concern round two. Very concerned out there. Board concerns? Matthew, uh, you?
No.
All right, adjourned.